We call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the July 25, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting. Morning Jackie.
Good morning. The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, July 25, 2013 at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were President Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of July 18, 2013 as submitted. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of services provided by Johnson Controls as presented by Representative David Durazio at last week's meeting. Johnson Controls is a consultant and provider of energy-saving solutions for efficient operations of facilities. Ms. Palmeroy reviewed the utility benchmark analysis memorandum of understanding by and between the Upshur County Commission and Johnson Controls for a preliminary energy audit slash analysis at no cost to the county. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the agreement. The agreement is for an evaluation only and does not obligate the county for any future purchases, purchase of services or products. The commission discussed the board vacancy on the Buckhannon Upshur Health Department Board of Directors. At this time, the county does not have a recommendation for the bank vacancy. Commissioner Tenny requested that interested parties contact the county commission. The criterion for the commission appointee is for Republican and a resident of Washington District. Megan Palmeroy provided an update slash status report on the James Curry Library and Park Advisory Board. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the appointment of Megan Palmeroy as board member. Ms. Palmeroy's term will expire on December 31, 2015. Megan Palmeroy provided an update slash status report on the court security fund grant award in the amount of $38,176 for the purpose of enhancing the county's court security. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant agreement and related documents. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of a new or updated Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility forms. The volunteer program policies and procedures, rescue agreement, and animal surrender agreement have been amended to provide better policy understanding of rights and responsibilities between volunteers, facility administrators, adopting parties, and rescue organizations. The new slash updated forms will also facilitate improved tracking and record keeping. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the forms. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the following volunteers for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. Terry Riffle, Robin Keough, Chrissy Lloyd, Shelley Phillips, Nicole English, Sandra Bennett, and Christie Riffle. Approval of these volunteers is conditional upon their acceptance of the signed document of volunteers, volunteer program policies and procedures. At 9:30 a.m., on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss the employment of a part-time administrative assistant for the office of the Upshur County Commission. Present were Donnie Tenny, Troy Brady, Megan Palmeroy, Jennifer Dinklo. The commission returned to open session at 9:55 a.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the employment of Aaron Fletcher as part-time Upshur County Commission Administrative Assistant at the rate of $8 per hour. Effective date of employment is August 12, 2013. And then there's a note that Aaron Fletcher retracted her acceptance of this position on 7/26. The position remains open. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, statewide transportation improvement program, notification, review, and comment period through July 29, 2013. Number two, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Number three, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number four, meetings as listed. Number five, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following request for time out of office for commission employees as listed. The commission approved the following request to attend meeting for commission employees as listed. The commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. And with no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission meeting adjourned to 11:30 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? I don't ask for motion to be approved as such.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Pose same sound. Motion carries. Okay, our next scheduled appointment is at 9:30. So we have some other issues we can discuss till we get to that time period. First being correspondence dated July 29, 2013 from Jim Ferry, Chairman of the Lewis Upshur L.A.P.C., request for donation. We have requests for $2,000 which we've been making for the L.A.P.C. for their work there. Did we budget that?
Yes, and I apologize, my wording there was probably a little bit misleading. This is actually an annual contribution. It's a contribution that both Upshur and Lewis County do annually. So we did budget in our emergency services office line item $2,000 to donate to them. They use that to purchase spill containment response supplies, equipment that they house in both counties for any sort of emergency.
So if you haven't--
It's not necessarily a donation, but it's a contribution.
It's a budgeted amount.
Correct.
So if you haven't already, then all Jim needs to do is use his P card to access that on purchases. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that if he makes purchases for that, then when we see those purchases come through, we'll take the money out of the appropriate line item to pay for those purchases.
Okay. If you haven't done so, then let's notify him that that was approved at the budget time. Okay. Approval of Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility, volunteer applications Samantha Atkinson, Ralph Bennett, and Jacqueline Cutright. Are these three new ones?
They are three new ones. Only one also turned in the program policies and procedures as well. So again, the other two will be, have to be approved if you do so conditionally upon their acceptance of those guidelines.
Okay, so Samantha, is that the one? She turned it in?
Samantha and Ralph did not turn that in. Jacqueline did. So if you approve her, she'll be ready to go right away. The other two, I'll just have to make sure to get them that form and ask them to sign and return it.
Okay, so we'll approve Jacqueline and the other two pending the agreement of our new form. Motion.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sound. Motion carries. Okay, we have correspondence from Nesco Inc. regarding blasting activities in Meade District commence August 21st through August, oh, August 23rd, 2013 through August 20th, 2014. And they will be blasting, and it lays out their warnings and all that. And there are certain regulations the state has that they have to meet in order to carry this out. So this is just for our information. We don't have to approve. Correct?
Correct.
Just for our information.
Correct.
Okay. And we have Division of Justice and Community Services Grant Award, Upshur County Stop Team Project Number, as it states, $30,000, July 13th through June 14th.
And this is one that we have discussed already. We just include copies of the formal signed contract and cover page in the agenda for the minutes. So this is one that we've already done the paperwork for and--
Just a notification.
Yep.
Okay. And we have agendas and notice of meetings and financial reports. So that looks like until 9:30 unless you have something else?
Well, I did want to just mention that we received a very generous donation. Ashley Howard put on a bingo event and donated. She herself brought over about $1,000 in supplies for kitty litter, cat food, dog food, that kind of thing, to our animal control facility. I think that was purchased with the proceeds from the bingo event. But then we also received a $1,000 check from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles--
Oh, very good.
--for our animal control facility. So very generous and--
Very much appreciated and needed.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
And then our health board appointment is still open, and the requirements for that are that they be from the Washington District and Republican. There was a little bit of confusion. I think we had mentioned that it would be beneficial if they maybe had a background in the health field, but that's not required.
Not a requirement. Just the first two is a requirement. So anyone that meets that criteria that's interested, we'd ask you to contact the commission office so we can compile all those great lists of volunteers and choose one. So, and I would like to congratulate Jerry on the blast in the past, and it was a very well-tended event. I didn't see my first car, which was a 1957 Ford. I did see some Fords. I did see a nice '57 Chevy, which I took my driver's test in, that had a clutch that come out about all the way out before it took hold. But some nice old cars, I tell you.
We had a little better turnout this year than we had last year, even with the rain.
Right.
But it was a success, and I think we're going to vote on whether we'll do it again next year.
Lot of work, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Seems like there are just a few of us that work on it.
Right. That's the way it is in any organization. 20% do 80% of the work.
Have to beg for help right up to the end.
Yeah. But I'm sure those that went, we appreciate it. It was really nice.
Donation was greatly appreciated, too.
You're certainly welcome. Well, I think you'll find out that everybody wants you to do something, but when it comes down to helping, you can't find the help you need.
Yeah, they've always got something else to do.
Something else to do. Everybody's for you to do it, and everybody said, "Oh, yeah, we'll get together and do it." But the minute you start, you look around, there's not very many people there. But it was a nice event. Lot of cars on Main Street, a lot of people down Main Street.
We here had, you know, the businesses around town toward the other side.
And I found out here, if it's worthwhile cause, people will help you out.
Yes, indeed. Mr. Huber down here, he came to us, nobody had been to see him, and he wanted to make a donation to us. He offered us his parking lot, and then he printed up 500 coupons for cross, crossed his friends and friends out to children. He was very generous.
Right. Yep. He's a good man. He's my neighbor. That's with Wendy's, James Huber. Okay, anybody else have anything till 9:30? Okay, well, I'm sure we have some paperwork. Okay, it's 9:30. We have Steve Linger, he now is my communications center director, emergency zone mapping approval. Steve's got all kinds of maps this morning. Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. I was tasked with the job to get the emergency service zone map signed by all the fire chiefs. And I went out last week on the road and was able to get four of them to sign. And at the fire association meeting this last Monday night, I attempted to get the other three to sign. And they didn't choose to sign at this time. They had a couple of issues that they were trying to get addressed. One was the CD that were, DVD that we're trying to provide them with addressing and mapping. And so they set up a meeting with Landmark Forestry, who was supposed to be at the Firefighters' Association meeting. But due to the fact that he had the same type of meeting with Barber County, and it lasted longer than he thought, that that meeting had to be rescheduled, and it's next Tuesday. So currently, I have four of the seven signed on the map. But I have, back in April, we had sent them notices that we were to, if they had any objection to the map or anything, or if they agreed to it, to fill out a form that we had made and to submit it. And I have two additional signatures on those forms. So they aren't on the map, but I do have signatures, so that would represent six out of the seven.
Now, clarify this a little bit. What was, what was the reason that they, that they didn't want to sign?
They want the addressing and mapping information on a DVD that they can put into a laptop computer and put in their fire engines.
And so--
And we've been working on that project now for quite a while, and it's a question if Landmark can get a program that will work in a laptop computer. The one that we have now takes a much more advanced computer to then, a regular laptop to work that program.
And what, what would that program then do?
They could type in an address, and we show them a map of where they were going and the fire hydrants and things like that.
And that's not available any other way?
Not yet. We have it, that is the system that we have now at the comm center that Landmark was able to supply us, and we got it installed at the comm center. But they want an addition that will fit in a laptop computer. And I'm not sure if we've been successful in that. That was one of the things that, that Landmark was supposed to discuss this last Monday night at the meeting, and was, they weren't able to attend.
So did, in your discussions with Landmark, what do they feel the feasibility of being able to do that is? Something they feel they can do?
In the past, they hadn't quite been able to do it, but they were working on that process evidently. There's many, many layers to what we have. You know, it's got the flood plains and everything on these maps, and they were trying to get it to where there would only be like the street level and fire hydrants and things like that, maybe only two or three of the many, many layers that are involved. So it's one of those engineering technical processes that, that I'm not familiar with. But it would actually, the elimination of data off of the disk, I'm not sure, you know, how that works. But it is quite a process, I understand.
And I've been talking to Wes at Landmark, and I talked to Mitch Tacey a little bit about this as well from the Buckhannon Fire Department, just trying to figure out how we can get, because we can get them the disk, it's just a matter of them being able to read it. And the program itself is incredibly expensive to be able to read all of those different things. So we've been, when I say we, I talked to Wes and Mitch about, you know, what, what they have available, what we can use. There are some free readers, I think, that you can download, and we never got into PC versus laptops, so I don't even know if these are available on laptop. But there are some free readers that you can use to read our data, but that won't give you everything that I think that they want.
Yeah.
Wes had said that he would be able to maybe put together a program for each of these fire departments, but that would be an additional fee--
Right.
--for the fire departments to write a program that would be able to read it. So we are, I mean, we're actively working on trying to see what we can do to get it to them, but I mean, there's, there's some barriers just in terms of the massive amount of data that they want and their capability to read it.
So it was my understanding, the way that worked, that you had your basic map, had your basic information, and then you could either lay layers on or take layers off. But are you saying it's all tied together, that you can't just lay on one layer? I mean--
I think the fire hydrants are tied into many other things also on the same layer. So, and they just want the streets and the fire hydrants, basically, is what they want. So--
And another thing that they, that we had talked about was the ability to maybe have a document, like, let's say there's a building that has a lot of chemicals in it, that would require certain firefighting--
Apparates.
Hazmat.
Yes. It would be helpful for them to be able to have that in a document, so if they type in the address, they can find that document that goes with that house that says, "This is what's in this house or building."
Right.
That way, before they go, they'll know what they're headed into.
Right.
But that, again, is an additional part of the reader that they would have to build on to whatever each fire department wants. And Wes can do that for them from Landmark, but again, it's an additional fee, and I don't know. I haven't talked to all of the fire departments about that. This is, we had a communications meeting, and I think all three of you were there, as well as Steve, and a number of the firefighters, I think it was like two hours where we talked about this. It didn't get, we didn't have all of this information then, but so, so we're working on it. There's some obstacles, but we are actively working on getting it to them.
So, so the way that works now is that you have, you have that information, access to that information at the comm center?
Yes.
And now, it's my understanding that every address in Upshur County has a, has the x, y coordinates on?
There is an actual physical address on every building.
Right. So, but it was my understanding that, like on a Garmin, is it called a Garmin? That you can just type in the address and it, and it gives you a map to it? I mean, is that something that's not usable till this is developed, or?
I'm not sure of what's available in Garmin. I know that a lot of times people will complain that this street isn't in it yet, or that street isn't in it yet.
Right. Well, and I do know that they, they have to keep that updated for that information to be there. And with all the road name changes, it's, there's been a lot of changes, so there's no doubt that there are some streets that are, probably aren't on there. But, well, has there been any estimates as what the cost would be to put that in such a format?
Just going off my memory, I believe that Wes said if, you know, again, there's a free reader, but even if they had the data in the free reader, I'm not sure if it's, I don't think that laptops can handle that much information. But I think if they wanted the more advanced type, and if they had it on a PC at their station or something, then I think Wes, I believe, had said about $1,500, I think.
Each, each department, to get the equipment?
Yes. Because he would have to write the program for each department. That's, I don't know if that's entirely accurate. That's just, I mean, I talked to him a month or two ago, I think, so. And that, I mean, that would change depending on what they would want to have available to them, whether they want to read all of the different layers and be able to touch documents and, you know, all this stuff, then it's probably going to be more expensive. But I think, I think that was kind of a more advanced, but still somewhat basic way to read the information. But that's, that's a little bit of a separate issue from the emergency zones. This is the last step in the addressing and mapping program. So this is, I think, I mean, this is kind of the very last part of that, correct?
Yes, it's like they were trying to tie the two together.
Right.
So this is just to have them approve their boundaries to their fire districts. He's, the individuals that are not wanting to sign, I think, want the addressing and mapping and are maybe not signing it to try and get that. But we are actively trying to, and this is something completely different than the addressing and mapping. This is just to approve their boundaries.
So where does that put us with the fact that two don't want to sign, three, two or three don't want to sign?
Well, I mean, I have four on the map, but I had had two other signatures that came in when we asked them to approve an individual map that looked just like this on their own area.
So we have two that--
To have two of those, so it would just leave one that--
Just one that hasn't.
That hasn't ever agreed.
Oh, hasn't ever agreed.
Yes.
I talked to the state, the acting state fire marshal yesterday about what we can do. I mean, because this is something that Steve has been trying to get done for quite a while. He's, I mean, been very active in trying to get these signatures and just haven't been able to. But this is the last step in terms of us wrapping up the addressing and mapping. So I talked to the fire marshal to see what we can do, and if we could approve the signatures that are there now, he said, "If we write letters supporting that these are the boundaries that we have now," you know, most of them are agreed upon, and have the fire chiefs sign a letter saying that they approve their boundaries, the ones that will, and then send it in, then it is up to the state fire board, I believe, or the fire board commission, to look at the map and approve it, or talk to the, the fire chiefs, I believe, to see why they won't sign it, and then what to do then.
So we need to approve what we have now, and then it goes to the state fire marshal's office? Then, and is there a, is there a disagreement over the actual fire areas, or is it just--
There was a slight disagreement between Selbyville and Banks over an area down at the end of Gaines Road. The access to that was Get Out Run Road, and it was a dirt road. And Banks said that that wasn't year-round access, but Selbyville says it was because they go through there all the time with several inches of snow. There's a part of Selbyville's area that has, you have to go through that area to get to the rest of their little area that's isolated down there, Goshen down further. And so there was an agreement, I believe, that they worked out that both departments would be dispatched to that area so that no matter what weather it would be, you know, but they were concerned about, Selbyville was concerned about several people down in that area had complained that they thought that it took too long for Banks to help on an EMS assist call down there. And that Selbyville mileage-wise is just over a couple hills from them, you know. So that's what started this conversation. And so they basically agreed to have both of them come to those areas.
So is that, is that--
But that was the only area of contention in the whole map, was that area on the Gaines Road extended.
So is that the way it is now? If there's an issue in that area, you tone both of them?
Send both.
Okay. So--
So they've sort of agreed. I've got Chief Shaws from Selbyville's signature on that he approved this other map, which is, has that.
Right.
Okay, so it's just a question of Banks District hasn't approved it.
Okay, so Selbyville has signed and agreed to that.
Yes.
But Banks District hasn't.
Hasn't.
But they're both in agreement, that's the way it should work?
Yes.
So that's not the issue or the reason for not signing? It's to try to--
It's, I believe, Chief Bonnet wanted me to express his opinion today that, that these addressing and mappings DVDs are extremely important, and that they think that that will really help them in some of the areas down there, to have these available to some of their members. Some have newer members and don't quite know the areas like the older members, and that these would definitely be an improvement to help.
Well, now, here would be my question now. I don't know if you've, if you've answered it from Landmark, but if, if these programming changes are made, would laptops have the capabilities of handling it?
That, I don't know. When I was talking to them about, I mean, there are several hurdles kind of to be, them being able to use it. Really, we're, besides the insurance side of it, we have a memorandum of agreement for them to sign. We've just been tweaking-- We've just been tweaking a little bit of language that they asked us to, so that's pretty much done. So everything on our end is almost ready for them, for us to give them the DVDs. On their end, and we've been trying to help them with this, but on their end, they need to figure out, first, if they have a program that will allow them to use the data in the way that they need to. And second, how much it's going to cost, and I guess, third, if it's going to be able to be on a laptop.
Right.
And I guess, I mean, that would kind of play into whether they want it on the road or if they want it in their department. And I, you know, I don't know if that's, each fire department individually probably has to make that decision, but we are, we're making it available to them. It's just a matter of how they want to use it, how, if they are going to be able to do that, and that's, you know, something they, I think, individually have to work on. We'll assist them in any way we can, but, so we don't know.
Do we have, does each of the fire departments have a map that shows the roads and all that information and the fire hat, so they have a hard copy now?
Landmark had me give each of the chiefs a map.
Okay.
And so that they could agree with the area.
So they could actually take that map and break it down into sections, and have it in a smaller form where everybody could have that, so if the calls at Goshen or Gaines, they could go to that section as that, and then they could see exactly how to get there and where they are. I mean, now-
I was a fireman for many years in a different area, but every piece of apparatus we had had a map book in the front of it with every fire hydrant listed. In fact, we had to memorize them back in the old days where every one of them was, but. So I don't know, I think it's like all the new electronic things, we, everybody wants the latest, and-
Right.
And this is one of those things.
Yeah, okay. So we need to approve this, assign, so we can get it sent to the state fire marshal, and then he will, he'll tweak that as far as the ones that haven't signed, and either approve it as such, override their not signing, or make recommendations, so. But once we get, once we get this approved, then it's still going to take a while to go to the state and get approval and all that stuff before we can-
When I talked to them, I think you said their next meeting is in August sometime. So if we can get it down there as soon as possible, they might be able to discuss it at their next meeting in August.
Right, okay. Well, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sound.
Thank you.
Jerry, you have a question? Go ahead.
On this one, I don't know whether it is a good referral. Would it have the bridge, lake limits, barages, etc. written on it?
I don't believe it will. I think on Terry Joe's edition it does, but I'm not sure that this one.
You know, none of us want to see a park ride go through a bridge.
Right.
I mean, approximately, that's not true.
Well, and there again, on those maps that they have, probably has the weight limits, or could have the capability of having one that, so they'd know-
Where they could-
-which way they'd have to go to get which vehicle.
Attach a piece of paper to it so they could click on the bridge and it would show.
Okay, Steve, do you have anything else?
No.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let you get back to it.
Steve, you have a great day.
Okay, well, unless someone else has something, we'll get back to our paperwork.